Good.
Okay. Okay.
Good, yep, thank you.
Call order, the May thirteenth meeting of the Town and Wiltland Planning Board. Uh, first agenda item is minutes from April twenty second.
Yep, and all three members here tonight were present at that meeting, so you guys, you have a court to approve those meeting minutes.
Yeah, I had don't solve a room, so I'll make a motion for it, except the minutes is written. Uh, on the second.
Okay, my motion is second, any discussion? Do you hear no, all in favor?
Alright, bye.
Well, yeah, and I do number two, actually, Dick, it's interesting you said that before we started, I have a notation on here about the restructuring that. You may wanna table it until you have at least Alex here in person, because I don't see Alex on Zoom, so with only three members here. It does, yeah, if, if you want, yeah, I, I think it's gonna be.
I take the motion to uh move to to uh our next meeting.
The restructuring.
Restructuring, yes, planning board restructuring.
Your last.
Motion.
Uh, I'll second, but they are.
Any discussion on that?
No.
You hear no, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, item three, mass tree holdings.
We're zooming through, uh, mass tree holdings, I did communicate with Mark at mass tree holdings, however, I did learn when I was setting up for the meeting today that they'll, oh, hold on. Alex is here, my apologies. Alex, can you hear us?
Oh, right.
Alex?
I'm going to that again.
I, I showed him on my uh, on my screen here.
Nothing's coming up on that screen, no.
Yeah, um, so what, I don't know how to fix this, um.
Do you want the cable people?
No, Alex, can you hear us?
Yeah, where did the playback be from?
I don't know.
Right there, I just heard, can you hear us, Alex?
Blink twice.
I just heard, I just heard a cough on the.
There's Peter in the.
So, I set up the thing on this pad, oh, Austin did.
Yeah. And you said you wanna see other people?
Yeah, so it's not showing up on that screen, it's showing up on here, but.
I see.
Oh, oh, there we go.
Um, okay, so.
Okay, ah, that was it, okay.
And then I would recommend turning off your volume here.
Is that good? Okay, thank you.
And then you should be able to hear them if they speak now.
Awesome. Awesome, thank you. Alex, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Awesome, thank you.
And then if you wanna see them. Think you can do something.
Can you turn the volume up a little bit?
Yes.
Cause he's kinda soft.
I don't have Alex.
Alex, can you speak again?
Yes, can you hear me?
That's much better, thank you, thank you, Rose, awesome, thank you very much. Okay, Alex, thank you for being here tonight, um, just to get you caught up, the meeting minutes were approved, um, the planning board restructuring is gonna be, restructuring is gonna be held off until the next meeting. Um, until everyone can be here a person, so that, um, we're on item number three, and as I started to say, I did communicate with Mark this morning, but the Zoom link on the, um, on the agenda was giving us issues. So they had to be sent, obviously Alex got sent a different Zoom link, but Mark from mass tree holdings didn't get the Zoom link, so he can't be with us tonight. So that's something I can put on the next agenda for him to give us an update on how that is going.
Okay, next item is uh discussion comments on the ZBA public hearing.
Yes, so they have a site plan review public hearing coming up for the property of one forty seven Pleasant Dale Road for a residential dog kennel, or doggy daycare, rather, it's not gonna be overnight, so. This is one of those where the ZBA is soliciting, um, comments from the planning board, if you have any, so, um. So I was wondering if the board wanted to, you know, discuss or give any comments on this project.
Um, I thought at first it was an overnight thing, so if it's not, that's a lot different.
It's not overnight from what I understand.
It's a lot different, so it's okay.
Yeah.
And it gets a interesting opportunity for someone to, works from home, to utilize their time, um, and help other people out in town, um. You know. To devote your whole first floor of your house to, you know, you know, um, you know, uh, pet friendly areas. You know, it has its challenges and it's not something everyone could do, so if they can do it, it's pretty cool, um, and I would just say whatever the animal control officer likes about it, you know, that's.
Well, they have a good perspective.
Yes, and yeah, first of all, it's gonna be a public hearing, so the abutters will be notified, um, when I did talk to gentleman, when he, he came to visit my office a few times to discuss this possibility. Just from, um, other communities I've worked in where something like this has been proposed in a residential area, the two issues that come up, um, most of the time are noise, in terms of dogs barking. And pee, poop, uh, pee and poop, what are you, what are you gonna do with the pee and poop, um, so, I've seen instances where, you know, if, if they don't put a solid fence up, if it's chain link fence. Then the, the board in question will ask them to put some kind of solid, like padding to kind of, you know, control the noise, make sure it's not so loud, so.
Noise, yeah.
But those are things that'll be discussed during the public hearing by the ZBA, and abutters will be notified and they'll have a chance to come in and, and voice their concerns, so those are, those are the two most common issues when it comes to a home dog daycare like this, is noise and the odor from the, from the pee and the poop.
Yeah. Yeah. And the particular area I feel is, is justified to have something like this, and there, that's not grounded.
Yes, it's not that dense of a population there.
Right.
It does look like this is gonna be a separate building entirely.
Yes. So obviously, he, he's gonna have to think about setbacks.
I thought it was just a fenced in area.
No, it's, it's gonna be a separate building.
Yeah, I saw those, I wasn't sure if that's his floor plan for his house.
Uh, well, considering it was labeled a grooming area, okay, and into a sleep area, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it seemed, yeah, I guess, I was confused by, is this, you know, conversion of the first floor of your house?
Right, right.
Or if it's. Yeah, but if, if it is a structure, yeah, I guess he'll just have to work within the setback.
The animal control officer and the, the board of health may be involved in this review to make sure that everything is sanitary and. Obviously, the building commissioner will become involved because of the construction of a, of a structure for this.
I mean, I, I see the convenience of having it being built into the house, I mean, they do have plenty of room in the back too, to try something if, but that's not something I'm pretty too, obviously, in their plans.
Well, obviously, dogs and cats are different, but my wife and I utilize, when we go on vacation, we actually board our cats at a place in Franklin, um, where the woman's a former nurse, she has, she has two such facilities, one's in Norwood and one's in Franklin, and it's in her home. It's interesting, she has it set up in, in a part of her home, and it's a very dense neighborhood with houses close by and no problems, obviously, cats are different, they don't go outside and things like that, but, yeah, but it's wonderful, we, you know, it's a, it's a place where.
No.
You know, we don't have to have someone come over and take care of our pets for us when we're on vacation, and she's wonderful with them, so yeah, these, these types of facilities are really, are really helpful.
Yeah. There are no houses in front of it anyways, and, and that's.
No, it seems like a deep lot.
It is, yeah.
Kevin and Demon Bond, take the animals for a dip.
So does the board want forward any comments such as, um, obviously, you know, outside of any comments they make at, at the public hearing, that the board is, um, overall supporter of this project?
I think, I think personally, it's a, it's a great start, um, it's a, I think, I hope this is something that everyone can kinda get behind sometimes, uh, like a dispensary or something might be a little bit, uh, off putting for some people, but hopefully. You know, this can be a, a good foot in the door, cause we need to start getting that commercial rolling, and I, I think, when you bring in it, and I'm trolling, and asking the questions that you've already brought up, then I feel like we're kinda covering a lot of our bases there.
Yeah. So, um, you know, if the board would like me to forward its, its overall support, maybe with those two points about sound and odor, as, as being something that are gonna need to be, you know, thought of.
Yeah. Yeah.
As this, as this project gets reviewed, uh, would that be something, would that be the recommendation of the board for me to forward those comments to the ZBA?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, so once we're at, next thing, discussion town plan transition.
Yes, so my last day is Tuesday, um, afternoon at two will be my last time here, um, so. Um, the town administrator has advertised for an interim, interim town planner, um, he has received three, um, resumes, um, he forwarded them to me this morning, um, so. Norm, you and I discussed this yesterday, so what we think would be, um, a good course of action would be for the board to delegate two members of the planning board to speak with the three applicants. Because it's not a permanent town planner, it's an interim town planner, so the process isn't as lengthy or as formal, but, um, you know, maybe if the board would, you know, recommend two individuals to meet with these individuals. Um, I could try and, and get it done before I leave on Tuesday, potentially on Monday, we could have a Zoom meeting from my office with the, with the three applicants, um, get it going as quickly as possible, but. That's the request of the board, is to delegate two members to meet with these people, or at least meet with, you know, we have three names, maybe we can pick two, you know, and, um, and, you know, meet with them to decide which one would be the better fit, so, um. That, that's the request of the board, oh, to the board.
Well, I don't know, obviously, I'm available, so.
So, are you looking for people to volunteer to meet with them, is that correct?
Yeah, it could be by Zoom, it doesn't have to be in person, cause I have the ability to do Zoom from my, from my office, I could set, I could do something from the wood studio, where Norm and I could go to the wood studio, but if another member were, were, you know, couldn't make it in person, we could do it by Zoom.
Yeah.
And invite this other person in, so we could do something like this, where the other board member and the applicant, we could invite them to attend a Zoom meeting, and we could try and do it very early next week, but of course, it depends on their schedule, uh, so, so yeah, we could do something like that.
Maybe this week, maybe.
Yeah, I, I'd love to.
We could do, we could do.
Yeah, we can tell how available they are.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so I mean, the two board members, I could set it up, if the board, if the board wanted to do it on Friday morning, I could do, I'm not gonna be here, but we could do it on Friday, so I would, I would recommend early next week, I mean, I'm leaving early on Thursday because of town meeting. I'm leaving here at one, I'm leaving work at one thirty, I mean, we could do something Thursday morning.
Yeah. Monday's house.
Yeah, I would say Monday if we could do it.
I won't be, I'm gonna be working.
I was gonna say, I gotta, doctor's appointment, I gotta take my wife to.
So, it sounds like we have our two members, Norm and Alex.
Is this a public meeting?
Yeah.
No. No, these aren't public meetings.
I can, I think.
No, the, the interview, job interview, even when they hire permanent, these aren't public meetings.
Well, I know when they interview the town administrator.
That's different, that's a different position, my, my interviews with the town delegates were not public.
Okay. Okay.
So, um, so anyway, so Alec, Alex, are you available potentially on Monday during the day?
Uh, yeah, potentially, as long as you can, can kinda tell me what time, I can often move stuff around, Thursday is the only day I can record.
Okay, okay, so, let's try for Monday, and what do you think about, you know, so we don't have to have three meetings, what if we pick the top two out of three, would that be acceptable to you guys? Okay, we'll pick, we'll pick the top two, and, um, I could, you know, looking at, I'm not gonna mention names, but looking at the resumes, two stand out to me, and so I can, I can talk to you about that. Um, do you wanna stop it tomorrow, when we can take, take a look at them, Norm, and, um, just, yeah, cause it's, honestly, Alex, two out of the three stand out to me pretty obviously from the get-go, because they have the most relevant experience. And the, the third one, there, there's one that particularly stands out to me, so, what we could do is we could look at them, and, so.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, Alex, so, what we'll do is Norm and I will hook up tomorrow, I'll, I'll show you the three, see if we agree on the top two, and then we can set something up for Monday, awesome.
Yeah. Sounds good, sounds good. Uh, okay, now, just, since we're still on that subject, Alex is for an interim.
Yes.
And I believe Austin said that he really felt that the permanent position should wait until there's a new town administrator.
Town administrator, right, now, does that mean acting town administrator, or does that mean permanent town administrator?
I would say.
Probably permanent.
Which we have no idea.
That could be, that could be three months, it could be six months, it could be eight months.
How long is Austin staying today?
Uh, probably another week or two, I mean, he said whenever the baby, he, his last day officially is June thirteenth, so he'll be available, but whenever his wife goes into labor is when he's gonna start his, his time off.
Yeah.
He thinks it's probably gonna be sometime next week.
So what's happening, okay, just, just curious.
Now, there's one candidate, like I said, when we meet tomorrow, I'll show you, but there's one candidate that Austin showed me today, that I believe this person would potentially be a good candidate for the full-time position as well as the interim, um, so.
Which obviously. Some of them who do pay for interim, that kinda puts them in the running.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, like I said, um, with town administrators, obviously, um, towns, when a town administrator moves on, usually appoint an interim to give them a chance to hire a permanent, and you have two types of individuals that come forward, you can, you, you know, some towns use it as a way to. Bring someone in as kind of a test to say, oh, we think this person may be good for the permanent, let's see how they do as an interim, or you have other town administrators who are retired, who go town to town and fill in his interims as needed. Um, I know Jeff Nutting from Franklin has done that in the area, he did that with Hope Dale, and he did that with Menden in the area, uh, near my neck of the woods, so, uh, but I think, I think there may be the chance here to bring in somebody who could be. Uh, a good candidate for the permanent position at some point, and, I mean, like I said, yeah, obviously, um, you know, you know, when the, when the next town administrator is hired, the planning board can say, hey. As soon as this guy's hired, we really, we really like to, you know, this person would be on top camera, so he'd have the right to, to be permanent. So I think that opportunity is, is there with the people I've seen who have submitted. Uh, the communication about CMR PC delegates, I think that discussion may want to wait, because everything that happened yesterday is still very fresh, and.
I know, again, so the agenda was kinda related, uh, I think, uh, Austin, we could send out an email regarding the charter.
Yeah, that was something where, again, I, I felt it was too last minute, that should be put on the, the next agenda for the board to, um. Again, not knowing who was gonna be there tonight, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if Alex was gonna be sworn in anytime to attend tonight, but he was, so, um, yeah, that's something that's better left for the, the next meeting.
Okay.
Signature update, I can't do because I was waiting for, um, well, actually, I was waiting for Burton, but now I can just send it in, cause I don't need Burton's. Since he has, um, Burton has indicated that he's gonna be resigning, so.
He hasn't yet.
He hasn't officially resigned yet, yeah. So the other part of my report that I would like to give, and, um. Since we have actually completed a little trip on this board. So I have a brief PowerPoint to pull up, it won't take five minutes. Alex, can you see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, awesome, so. We had a survey that was just closed yesterday, that was opened up as of the community ex call at, in late March, to assess the interest that residents have in. The planning board bylaws, so committing the planning board pursuing potential rezoning along Route sixty eight. So, the intent, again, was to gauge level of interest from residents, because I didn't want the, myself or, uh, board members to spend time on something that wasn't supported by the residents, the survey was active for six weeks, which is a good time period. And I happen to say a total of four hundred and seventy-two responses were received, which is outstanding for a town this size especially. Um, questions asked about residents' level of interest in rezoning, with which portions of Route sixty eight they would support to be rezoned, and the types of development they prefer along Route sixty eight, if it's rezoned. So, here's the first pie chart, the first question was which of the following best describes your level of support for rezoning along Route sixty eight to allow commercial lane uses, and as you can see, eighty percent of people. Uh, fifty-four percent strongly support it, seventeen percent responded that their level of support depends on what's being proposed, and nine percent expressed that they somewhat support it, so that's eighty percent that expressed. A level of interest in having something happen along Route sixty eight, with only twenty percent indicating that they didn't want anything to happen along Route sixty eight, so, that was the first thing that we wanted to establish, is there apparently is interest in pursuing something. The second, this is where it starts getting a little bit more detailed, the second question asked, what type of commercial development do you think would be most appropriate along Route sixty eight, now, for some reason, the medium blue didn't show up on the, on the table underneath. Um, but the results show that twenty-five percent responded support any combination of the types of non-residential development listed. While twenty-two percent support a mix of residential, retail, service, or other similar use, with light industrial or manufacturing uses, and twenty-one percent support a mix of residential uses combined with retail service or other similar use, so. You add those three together, that's, uh, forty-seven, that's sixty-eight percent expressed support for those three types of uses, either any, you know, any of the list, uses listed. Or, you know, the, the combination of retail, so it kinda makes use of retail, commercial, um, residential, service, and also potentially some light manufacturing, um, mixed in there. So only twenty-one percent of respondents do not support any of the listed uses or combination of uses, and some people didn't, didn't answer some of these, so, um, but, as you can see, the, the responses are consistent with, um, with the response to the first question, the same level of support. So, the third question was, um, the results of question three show that forty-eight percent of respondents support considering rezoning along the entirety of Route sixty eight. Nineteen percent, with only nineteen percent not supporting any type of rezoning, again, twenty, right around that twenty percent, thirteen percent support rezoning the area north of Route fifty-six, and twelve percent support rezoning the area south of Watch Uden Street, now. Um. Norm came to my office yesterday, we started talking about this, and we looked at the, uh, we looked at the GIS map, and obviously, um, the board's gonna have to look at the corridor, look at the individual areas and lots, because there are areas where, um.
Right.
You know, um, you've, you've got, I forget, I think it's Paddock Road that curls around, is that it?
It's made. Yeah.
Where you've got a section of Route sixty eight that's between sixty eight and Paddock Road, you, you know, the town probably would say, well, we don't wanna rezone that, because that's a residential area between those two roadways, that's a possibility, so. Each section needs to be looked at to see what's appropriate, you need to look at the individual lots, um, you need to do an, an analysis of the corridor, to look at, okay, um, where are areas where the lots are, you know, maybe too shallow for some type of development like this. But, s, you know, Norm and I pulled up the lots and we looked at the GIS, and even lots that looked fairly shallow, was still a pretty good size, they were still a couple acres, like an acre and a half to two acres, which is enough to do some type of development on that, so, um. If the board decides to move, to move forward with this, that would need to be the next step, is to look at the corridor in detail, and decide what areas are most oppressed, uh, are most, are most appropriate to be rezoned. And then get into, okay, what type of rezoning do you think it's appropriate?
I think first, should get in there and wipe out anything that's Zone A, which is along the Mustang Park Brook.
Swamp area.
Swamp, in a swamp area, and the city of Worcester owns that anyways.
Yeah.
And up your Paddock Road, uh, if you're heading from Holden towards Hubbardston, the first part of that Paddock Road is swamp right there, so there's nothing gonna happen in there, because that flows into Zone A, that's a part of that, so.
Right, right. Right, right, and look at the ownership, obviously, anything that's owned by the state is gonna be out, um, you know, um, I'm not a big fan of town owned land being sold off to private development, so if there's town owned land up there.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You may wanna say, okay, do we really wanna look at rezoning that, or do we wanna hold on to that, and not, you know, we've, that, I mean, the town could sell it, they could lease it out if they wanted to, but.
Yeah. There is such a small spot that the town does own around sixty eight, uh, between the two paddock roads, where it swings in and out, it's on the left-hand side of it, uh, heading towards Hubbardston. It is also wetland, so it should go to, back to the owners, and I wish the hell that, I told the town a long time ago to do it, put it out the bid.
And, and. Right, but, but the, yeah, exactly, and the other thing is, there are gonna be some lots that may have some wetlands on them, but it doesn't mean they're undevolvable, there may, it may, it may limit it a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is the thing, you know, with, with wetlands, uh, we, we can't just rule out.
Correct.
Any section that has wetlands.
Correct.
Because, at least from my point of view, we, we don't want, oh, we're gonna do this spot, this spot, this spot, this spot, this spot, this one, we can't do this one because of that.
Right, exactly, exactly. So that, so that's why we have those regulations in place, that's why we have the wetlands regulations.
Yeah, well, if you come down fifty-six and onto sixty-eight, and you're looking right straight across, um, just over that, it is a big, huge pond or lake in, in there.
Yeah.
And that is.
It's gonna be the, the section north of fifty-six coming in, it's pretty much useless.
No, you have to go to Bushy Lane, north of Bushy Lane, because the, those wooded areas right there that you're talking about, from, you know, center auto body.
Yeah.
The wooded area, can't build.
Oh, no.
So trust, and also, see, um, from right gather.
So, conclusions, uh, we've already gone through most of these, um, the results indicate that the vast majority of respondents do support the rezoning of Sub sixty-eight in some capacity. A detailed analysis of the parcels along the corridor will need to be conducted, and Norm talked about potentially engaging CMR PC to help out with that, um, that might, might not be a bad idea, um, but. I still, I said to Norm yesterday, one of the advantages that, that my office has, because certainly I've worked in towns, like when I was in Stoughton, um, during, during COVID, we had eight active public hearings before the planning board simultaneously for large projects, I mean. They had industrial park with an eighty thousand square foot addition being put onto a manufacturing plant, um, Globe Enterprises, where they make submarine parts for the US Navy, so that's the type of development Stoughton had, so. Stoughton, during my four years there, there was, there was a lot of applications coming in, that, that's not the case in Rutland, so whoever's coming in after me has the time to really dig into stuff like that, so you may not need CMR PC as much, because. There's not the influx of applications, commercial applications that I've seen in other communities, like Rantham and like Stoughton, so that's the advantage that Rutland has, is whoever comes in can look at our bylaws, they can look at things like this, and they can really dig into this stuff. And really not, you know, you might not have to bring in a consultant to do that, so, that's something I would say kinda play by ear, because they're not coming into a situation where, oh my God, we have these, we have these five commercial applications before us, we have these forty B projects, like. You know, like, for instance, I'm going as a Douglas, and they're just starting their master planning, right, they're starting hazard mitigation plan, and this, they have a thirty unit forty B going before them, and they have all these things going on, Rutland doesn't have those projects going on right now. So, this is an, this is an opportunity for a planner to come in and really dig their teeth into something like this, so, that's a good thing, you know, it's more, it's more long-range planning, so, um. Have to see what the comfort level is of the next planner and see, and see what he's gonna do, so, lastly, what I recommend is, I'm not a big proponent of split zone lots. I, I hate them, I don't think they work, I, I honestly think, in my opinion, that's when people say, well, why haven't the village center districts really worked as, as much as we thought they would, I think that's part of the problem, I think split zone lots don't, aren't effective, because. You're automatically eliminating, in some cases, more than half of the lot, that you're trying to rezone to get some mixed use out of it, so developers look at that, and they're like, well, why am I gonna develop there, I can't, you know, I can't. So developers look at that and they're like, well, why am I gonna develop there? I can't, you know, I can't develop the whole site. So, my recommendation would be, when the, if the planning board moves forward with this and you're going to rezon lots, do not choose a distance from the center line of the road and say, well, we're gonna go five hundred feet. Because you don't know, because that lot may have some kind of limitation on the front of it, but you can develop in the back. So, I would recommend that if you're gonna rezone a lot, rezone the entire lot, the entire depth of the lot. Don't go five hundred feet, because if you have a very deep lot, five hundred feet is not very much. So, you're really kind of, I don't think your rezoning's gonna be as effective if you do split-zone lots like that.
Especially if people want to do commercial, but you can't do much with five hundred.
Because the other thing is, by making them develop closer to the road, maybe you want to tuck that business off the road so people don't see it as much. So especially if they have truck traffic coming in, it gives a chance for it to get off the road and go a little bit deeper in. And that's where you do that, but what you do is you could establish with this new zoning, you could establish buffers and setbacks that protect any residential or butters who may be in the area. So, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, and not only that, just beyond Putnam, who owns the property? DCR. The whole, all the way from Inter Vale Road, all the way out in the back and all the way to sixty-eight.
So, those are the results. So, obviously, the response was excellent. And I think the message from people is yes, that I think that it is useful to move forward with this, I think it is worthwhile. But again, where this goes, that's gonna depend on what's out there and what the nature of the parcels are. And, you know, so I don't think the entirety of Route sixty-eight is gonna get rezoned. I think you're gonna have a couple, two or three groups of parcels, to your point, Norm, where, okay, this group over here, this group of parcels is probably good, and this group of parcels down here is probably good. And you can come up with, I would recommend coming up with naming, coming up with a new zoning district named for whatever you do on here. And that way, if you need to tweak it going forward, you don't have to worry. Because if you name it like a zoning district that's already in existence, if you change something there, you have to change it in other zoning districts that are named the same thing. So. There you go, sixty, yeah, Quarter sixty-eight zoning district, something like that. And that way, if you need to change it, you can change that without affecting other places. That's why the town center district was a smart choice to name it that, because that's the only area in town that's named Town Center. So, if you change it, it doesn't affect anywhere else in town. So.
Could you provide us data separately to this that just gives us an idea what the people that, what pie chart the people that lived on the road fall into for all these questions?
These were anonymous. Yeah, we, that answered, we did, I did send them individually, but they're basically anonymous. Some did put their address, but very few.
It'll be, you know, it'd be pretty safe to say that most of the residential.
Stuff is keep it residential.
Well, some might, you know, they can tell.
Well, and like you said, so, what happens, people ask, well, what happens if we rezone something, a parcel that has a single-family home on it? Does that get eliminated? No, it gets grandfathered in, but that does mean that somebody could take their parcel that they have a house on, and potentially in the future, sell it to somebody who wants to do something different on there. That is a possibility.
Could that will increase the value.
Could increase the value of their property. Now, some people, you could look at it either way. Some people say, oh, well, geez, there go my taxes and my assessments and blah. So people say, well, that means I may have someone next to me who may do something more intense. Well, yeah, that's what it means.
Yeah, and I guess that's why I was curious if there was, but if they were literally just answer the questions with no traffic data kind of sort of, then we wouldn't.
Yeah, we kept this anonymous.
Yeah, which isn't a bad thing either.
And there's a couple of places I would really like to see, because I think they could jump not only from Route sixty-eight but over the Glenwood Road. And, you know, it's quite a, it's quite a big, there's a couple of properties that
That's interesting.
that could really pop, yeah.
Now, I have heard a couple comments during this process, and CMRPC is supposed to be doing traffic council on this corridor this year.
They had the lines out last week.
They did good, because I had a couple.
Yes, sixty-eight before fifty-six and after fifty-six.
So. I've had a couple people probably who live on sixty-eight say, I don't want anything non-residential because the traffic is so bad already, da-da-da-da-da. I can tell you right now, the traffic volume on Route sixty-eight is probably gonna be about four to five thousand cars over twenty-four hours, twenty-four hour period. It's.
It's not that heavily traveled.
No, it's not. It's not. I was surprised when they did the counts on one-twenty-two down at Barry Paxton, where there was only five thousand cars over a twenty-four hour period. Contrast that to Route one A in Rentham coming up from where the Rentham outlets are, nineteen, twenty thousand cars over a twenty-four hour period. Four to five thousand cars is not heavily traveled. So, that's where the education is going to have to happen, where it's like, no, this is not a heavily traveled road.
Can you pull out into traffic or do you have to wait five minutes?
Right. So, four to five thousand cars a day is very, very light. So. I think it was like five, six thousand, it wasn't very much. Yes. But truck traffic, the truck traffic is higher percentage-wise than average. So it's not heavy in terms of volume, but the truck traffic percentage is higher than normal. Because I think, I think normal is like ten percent, and I think it was like, I think it was like twenty percent or something, truck traffic. So it was quite a bit higher.
For some of them that are already working here, Watch Uden, excavating, they have quite a few trucks that are out there constantly going back and forth. But I can, they do try to, they're trying to get over to one-ninety or whatever, you know, the easiest way, they're Glenwood or whatever, Watch Uden. They're trying to get over there. That's the whole thing, why Route forty-nine, if they ever.
Oh, God. My last planning board meeting and you had to bring up Route forty-nine.
It's good.
It's the first thing I heard from Dick when I started, it's gonna be the last thing on air as I go. This is like, this is like bookends, thank you, Dick.
I still want an audit. What happened to the money that was allocated for that? Where did it go? When did they quit?
I'm sure it's gone.
It would have been a start.
I think it disappeared in other directions.
So, yeah, so anyway, so those are the results, and whatever, so anyway, so that's the results. And obviously, it'll be up to the next planner and you guys to pick up this ball and to do the next step. So, this is not gonna be, you know, people say, oh, is this gonna be out for the next town meeting? No. This is gonna be a lengthy process where you're gonna have to take it one step at a time.
It's like, we'd be lucky to get it for the next day anyway.
Oh, God, yeah. Especially now that, you know, we're bringing in an interim town planner, and they're gonna have to pick this up, so. But, it's gonna be up to you guys to keep this on the radar and make this a priority going forward.
And I would like to, you know, help out, you know, Mr. Putnam for crying out loud, for instance, that the village center up for him on sixty-eight up there in the north end.
Maybe he wants to see something, a new type of zoning that's a little bit more flexible, you know?
It could be.
We could rename that, we could rezone that to something a little bit different, you know, so. But you said he's kind of landlocked up there, right?
Yeah, but he has more land available.
Oh, yeah.
To put something else in.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I know, I talked to him, we were talking about the Land O' Cattle thing. And he was interested in something similar.
There you go. So, he might be worth engaging on this.
Exactly. And to me, for crying out loud, he's got the right kind of soil conditions up there, it's gravel. So, it's beautiful, you don't wanna try to work on anything.
So, that's it.
Thank you for getting that project.
Oh, you're welcome. No, thank you. The expo was a big kickoff, so, no, I really appreciate everyone participating. Like I said, four hundred and seventy-two. I got greedy at a certain point. I thought if we got four hundred, we'd be doing great. Once we passed four hundred, I wanted five hundred. We got close, we got pretty close, four seventy-two, but just to give, just to give everyone perspective, when we did a downtown rezoning survey back in two thousand and twenty in Stone, Stone is a town of thirty thousand people, we got eight hundred responses to that. The previous high for survey results in Stone was like five hundred and forty. So this is not far away from that, and that's a town three times the size of Rutland. So a response of four hundred and seventy-two is outstanding in a town like this. I don't think people appreciate that where that is a huge response for a survey in a town the size. Because actually, four hundred and seventy-two, I think there may have been some elections where that was the turnout for the election, right? There you go. So, yeah, so I really appreciate everyone participating in the planning board support, so I think the results were fantastic. Boy, that's a quick one. Yeah, don't need to do that. Oh, yes, yes, yes. So, my recommendation to that is not a broad discussion tonight because it doesn't belong on the agenda, but I would recommend placing that on the next agenda for discussion, Watch Uden Street, the status of that.
I hint right now, what we can do. I do see the possibility of revisiting bylaw.
That to me is number one.
Among other things, you know, and I had no idea of what was going to happen with that agricultural accessory bylaw. I did not anticipate at all this kind of activity. I really didn't, because I don't know, maybe it's why.
That last year, when Lylic had it up there, the cars were on Watch Uden Street, but there weren't that many of them. I'm gonna say maybe a thousand feet on each side. This time, this past weekend up there, it almost went all the way down to Route sixty-eight.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and people were screaming, my nephew, he's trying to get home for crying out loud. People screaming at him, you know, well, I'm just trying to get home, and tried to turn on the overlook. Was a disaster for crying out loud. Everybody was parked so close, you know, that is crazy.
Yeah, I think, and I think we, you know, if we change the bylaw, we can certainly put some conditions on the type of parking. That it can't just be open field parking.
Yes.
Because I'm assuming the problem here was the rain that we had. Probably most of his parking in on the.
Oh, it is on the field, it is actually on my nephew's field up there, that he has the.
So, put this on the next agenda, so you guys can get a copy of the decision, take a look at that, and just have a discussion on that.
Okay, and what else, anything else?
Not really, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a high roll for me. I, I, I am I'm gonna miss Tim. That engineering is going to be really, really hard to swallow.
I just, I just had a wild thought.
Yeah, let's wait until we've adjourned, and yeah, let's talk offline after.
Don't you have an alternate position now?
We would.
Yes, we will, because Alex was the alternate.
Well, was.
Well, here's the thing, hold on. We might have an alternate and a permanent position. So someone would have to, again.
Tim has always said he would not be the alternate.
Right, right, so. And who knows if he's gonna run next year? He's not too happy right now. So anyway, let's, again, let's not talk about this.
It's tough seeing you go. I've been forty-eight hours. You did give more notice, but, you know, it's just, it's tough. I think you've helped out the town a lot. And hopefully, there are doppelgangers of you as planning board. You know, town planners up there, because you've really done a lot.
Well, I told Austin I'd be willing to have, obviously, I'm gonna be, you know, I'd like to be involved in the interviews of these two people. And, you know, the best advice I can, Austin asked if I would give them advice to speak to him, I said, absolutely. I said, the biggest advice I can give, and this is a lot of things that I think, this is a lot I think that young planners don't seem to understand, is graduate school prepared me almost zero percent for what I experienced in the last twenty-five years as a municipal planner. In terms of the politics and the people and the personalities and the issues and things like that. I remember I interviewed for a planning job years ago in the town of Bridgewater, and one of their interviewers was their CPA consultant. And she asked me a question that was a textbook question about, well, could you please explain to me the pros and cons of form-based zoning code? I thought I was back in graduate school. So I remember I looked at her and I said, I said, listen, I said, of course I can give you that answer. I said, but, I said, when you're a municipal planner, I can tell you, the average resident has not spent two seconds thinking about what form-based code is or the effects it has on them. They're worried about getting their roads plowed, they're worried about their taxes, they're worried about these things. So that's the difference between being a consultant at ten thousand square feet and being on the ground as a municipal planner, actually staffing a board and working with the residents. So, that's an interesting dynamic where I think, I think a lot of these young people come out of school, and they get the theory and they get all the high-level stuff, but then they get in the trenches and it's a lot more administrative stuff. It's a lot more communicating and connecting with people and working with both sides of the fence. You know, you have to be apolitical. That's your best bet, is you can't be, you can't be on one side or the other because you have to be able to work with both sides of the aisle as much as possible. So, that's the best advice I can give somebody is, I know it's difficult when you're in the trenches and you're young, and you're insecure, but you can't be afraid to stand on your own and you're not gonna be liked by everybody. That's just the way it is. What's that old saying? If you try and please everybody, you're gonna please nobody? So, that's the best advice I can give a young planner is, don't be afraid to push back. And I had a conversation with Tim about that yesterday after the election results. Tim's like, yeah, you pushed back on me a few times, and that's fine, you know, it's like, so, yeah, it happens.
It helps the discussion.
Exactly, exactly, so. So that would be my, but I like what I saw, especially the couple of resumes we got, so I'm optimistic about that, so.
Well, I just, I guess I gotta echo in a little bit stronger terms, you've done one hell of a job for us.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Things have changed in this town. Over the thirty years that I've been on this board, they have changed.
I think there's been more change in just a few years.
Yes, I agree, yes.
It seems like things have changed a lot in the last few years, not just here, but post-COVID. Yeah, I think, I think, I think things, post-COVID has definitely, things have changed a lot. Whether it's, and it's not just physically, it's, I think, people's approaches to things, like, I remember the first. Well, it's interesting, I was in Stone during COVID, and I remember when we were coming out of COVID, and I think it was December of two thousand and twenty-one, the planning board briefly had one meeting, that was their first meeting back in person after being like virtual for like almost a year, right? And then they went back to virtual meetings for a few months and then came back out. But I remember being at that meeting in December, oh my God, it was like people forgot how to behave. The people who were coming, like, we met in this, we met in this big great hall on the third floor of Stone Town Hall. It was a huge room, like you could fit like two hundred people in there. And there was a semicircle table where the selectmen would sit and the planning board would sit. And then about maybe fifteen feet away was a table where the applicants would come and sit, so there was a lot of distance. All of a sudden, people were coming up and, kind of like certain people do who come before the planning board, and they're touching things and they're getting in people's faces. And I'm just, I just remember thinking, oh my God, it's like, what happened to people in the last year? It's like people just lost their minds. And it was just, I remember thinking, God, I'm glad we're going back to virtual meetings because this was rough. So, you're right, I think a lot has changed since then, for better or worse, so.
It's tough coming out. I wasn't on any board during that. I can't imagine, you know, masks and virtual.
It wasn't nice.
Or outdoor, outdoor meetings or something.
Oh, God, yeah. Well, what was tough is we just started the downtown rezoning, we just hired a consultant in February of two thousand and twenty, and then the next month is when COVID hit, and I remember it was March twenty-sixth when all the restrictions went in place. So, the survey we did, everything had to be virtual, nothing was in person, because the town buildings weren't open. So we couldn't leave paper copies of the survey in the library and the police department. Everything had to be done by email and things, but what made it a little bit easier was Stone has a representative town meeting, so they're precinct members, so they have a hundred and sixty representative town meeting members. So I could at least email the survey to everyone, but there wasn't QR codes like we had on this survey. So, to get eight hundred people in that environment was really, was really cool. That was really good, I was really happy about that. But, yeah, when a developer would drop off plans, they had to drop it on the first floor foyer of Town Hall. and then let you, send you an email that it was there and then we had to go down, get it, bring it up. We couldn't have, we couldn't have in-person meetings really.
Probably didn't have to disinfect the floor.
I was just gonna say, disinfected, we were disinfected on those streets.
Yeah, so, I mean, we had a big enough staff where my office is part of the office of, um, Development Services, so we had the Conservation Agent, we had the Engineering Department, we had GIS, we had the Board of Health, all like, I think there was like twelve of us in the same department. And we split the team up in half during COVID where we, we'd have the A-team and the B-team and one week the A-team would be in the office Monday, Wednesday, Friday, home Tuesday, Thursday, then it was flipped the next week, next week I'd be at work Tuesday, Thursday, home Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And I gotta be honest with you, I didn't really enjoy working at home because A, I didn't have a home office set up. So here I am, my wife and I are sitting at, on our dining room table chairs, my bad, I was guilty, oh, God. So we, I, if I had to do it over again, I would have, you know, if, if I knew it was gonna last that long, I would have got like, gotten myself a good chair or a desk or something cheap and set myself up in the basement or something, but I was not prepared to work from home. And, uh, I miss going into the office, it was, I found it to be a little bit distracting at home, um, so.
I've finally gotten the home office set up, starting to go, but when I worked in a rehab during COVID, that was very interesting because no matter how many patients got COVID, they weren't gonna send home the workers because they needed the workers to look after the patients.
Oh.
They would have you like gown up before you went into somebody's room who had COVID and then you'd come out of the room and take all the, all the gowns off and throw them in a trash can that was right in the hallway with everyone. Like none of the protocols really added up, but we, we all.
Yeah, but you have a, you have a nice situation, Alex has a nice home office, that, that's the type of setup I would have if I could do it over again, I would make sure I was set up like that. That's a, you have, you have a nice setup over there, it's nice, it's nice and comfy and functional.
Thank you, I, I got both monitors, Facebook Marketplace, both thirty bucks a piece and, uh, and then I, you know, Amazoned the rest.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, that's it. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
See you soon.
See, uh.
Motion.
Move to, move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Moving out. Second.
Any discussion? Anyway, anything for the poll? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Seven twenty-two.